Today is Tuesday, September 24th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, the Facebook Live on the, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. You'll notice that this is a different type of meeting since we are down here today and also that we're meeting on the last Tuesday of the month, so we are doing a goals workshop. So we don't have public comment tonight, we don't have announcements or any of the other normal agenda items that we have, and we're just going to jump right into that workshop tonight. So I have presented my goals, Amanda has done so as well, so I'm going to give each of the other members, as well as Carter, an opportunity to present any goals that they have, or just speak to what they think this board should be doing this year. So I'll start with Tom, because I know that he has his typed up.
Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I send my announcement for the board from last Tuesday. For the people at home, I will say that I presented one, because I agreed with two of the ones from Select Board Member Moore. Mine is Objective One: Work through the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, and the HR Director, and the Department Heads to initially create, to periodically review, and to develop and secure plans, policies, and procedures to keep current the following: Action One: A complete and thorough organization chart of the entire town personnel excluding schools, including defined areas for each department and any other subdivisions or sub-departments thereof. Action Two: A complete and thorough listing of each job title of each town employee and a full job description of each. And Three, Action Three: A comprehensive and concise set of standard operating procedures, SOPs, for each department consisting of, but not necessarily limited to, their recurring processes, daily, monthly, quarterly operations, the personnel and resources involved in those processes, and the escalation path for each. The first order of business in this goal is for the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, and Department Heads to confer and establish a timeline for all to follow, and schedule touch points, not fewer than one per quarter, at which the Select Board will hear progress on this goal and provide feedback. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tom. Renee?
So, I made notes based on the goals that I have been submitted already, to capture maybe some, some details that may have been...
Recording in progress.
You have to do that all over again. Some that may have been intended to be included, but just not stated, and then maybe stressing some other things. So, one is, I think, I don't think we should have like, half a dozen goals. I think it should be like, three, four tops. And I agree with the overarching goals being, one, around the budget and finance, Munis is part of that, even contain around information on our current contracts, the calendar of them, getting, I think I asked at the last Select Board meeting to get monthly or quarterly reports from facilities, and looking for revenue sources. This is, this is actually coming from Budget Task Force on the brain. The second overarching, not in any particular order, but second overarching would relate to transparency and accurate information. So, having as Amanda had in hers about, you know, putting documentation, making it publicly available in advance of the meeting, so on and so forth. But even going down to, this doesn't have to be written, but even little things like our website, having the correct membership of committees, the titles, the terms of their, of the committee and board members, that's lacking. And the other one around organization, maybe, you know, touching on the personnel a little bit, well, no, not really personnel, but the organization to have, and this has come up at previous meetings, a single drive with folders for each board member. I mean, I now have, I think Carter can relate, at least two Google Drives and one SharePoint, and I now have a school email, so I can access a Google Drive. So I'd like to see some consolidation of that, and just managing read-write permissions at, at basically a folder level, everything located at a single place. Publishing best practices for writing of minutes was something that I didn't see mentioned that I think would be good, given how we've been struggling with getting through our minutes, and some kind of standardization of the minutes across all the boards and committees. And, it's all over the place, because as they come to me during the workday, I jot them down. So I think that captures it for now. No, I have Post-its too.
Index cards are good, too.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's it for now. I'm sure I'll have more as we start discussing.
All right, thank you, Renee. Michael Ray?
Yeah, I concur in full with Amanda Moore's goals, as, as she's presented them. I really like the goals, Caesar, that you put forward, and I also like the goal that, that Tom put forward as well. I think that, you know, the goal that Tom is suggesting is likely a multi-year, and so that may be, I agree that we should only have, you know, three or four goals, but I think the one that Tom presented, I certainly would support adopting, but I think it should be a multi-year goal, and in the way its phrase is, as, you know, Tom indicated, you know, a big chunk of that's going to come from, initially from staff and staff review, that's going to take some time. So, for things that we can work on, you know, I, again, support Amanda's goals in full. And then on ours, you know, we, on, on the one, Caesar, that you proposed, you know, revamping the Select Board and Town Manager goal-setting process, I think that that would be helpful, having kind of those town-wide goals that Amanda also referenced. And then I just wanted to offer kind of a takeaway from the, from the listening session that occurred today. And so, I mean, I think that, I attended it, I'm not going to go into the details in all of it, I think there were a lot of takeaways largely for, on the Town Manager level, I think the general, you know, the general concern that I, that I heard was concern about, kind of day-to-day issues that, that staff did not feel was being appropriately addressed. But also, I think there was a takeaway for us, and the one comment that, that came out toward the end of, of the session was that this board, as a Select Board, that we need to better model the civility and professionalism that we expect from our staff, that, that was noted, that many staff watch these meetings, that they're not, I don't want to put words in people's mouths, but the, the comment was along the lines of that, it's hard, it's hard to come to work every day and be professional, and do your job to the best of your ability, when it looks like the Select Board is infighting, and that we take a long time to make decisions. So, I think that, you know, I don't know how we incorporate that into necessarily a goal, but I think as we, you know, talk through kind of these town-wide goals, you know, and I think, just generally speaking, you know, there's definitely opportunity for all of us, myself included, to, you know, be better. And so I think that that's something that individually, maybe, in addition to the professional goals, you know, we don't necessarily need to discuss our personal ones, but it's always good when we have personal goals of what we personally want to see in ourselves in terms of improvement or otherwise in this process.
Thank you. Fully agree with that, and there are things that we could in theory do, which I've thought about, is, you know, a code of conduct policy for this board, but hopefully it's not necessary. Carter, I know we've, we've talked a lot more philosophically about goals and how they should be said, and aligned, and collaborative, I don't know if you want to speak to any of that now?
Bearing in mind, I'm only going to be here for a little while, so I don't have to, you know, carry the burden of whatever I suggest. There are policies that need review and would be helpful. As simple as, I could show you one community where the agenda is laid out, and so if a new person comes into the office, they can turn to there and, oh, that's how the agenda goes together. It's not, well, how did, how did the last person do it? It's right down to in what order they'll put the warrant articles in place, and nobody's kind of figuring that out. I think some of those would be helpful. I'd like to distribute a document that I think goes away from where you were headed, but gives me an ability to speak to budget, goal-setting as part of budget process, if that's agreeable. One of the things that I've heard in my short time, sorry, is that there wasn't an overarching at the board level for, okay, for the organization. So, what this one community does is, they do have these, they have more goals, but bear in mind, these are at the department level. So, we've heard of one goal of an org chart. Who's going to do it? That falls into Administration and Finance. Does it have a cost? So, in this community, that Town Manager meets with the Select Board, gets all their goals, then meets with the Department Heads of, who's going to calculate, does it have money, costs? Then the Select Board signs off, then the manager, administrator, has a sense of, how do I make sure that this budget has the funds in it that are needed to deliver the goals of the Select Board? So, Les, frankly, you need to add some more hours. That's a budgetary impact, I get it. But with that, I now know that I have to quantify some time and let you all know what that is. So, knowing that the organizational chart is important to the board, now lets me, as a Town Manager, set my personal goals, it lets the DPW Director set their goals, and when the DPW Director sets his goals, and then he does the evaluations of his personnel and says, what are your goals? The goals at the bottom, each level should be working their way up to help deliver what you want to make happen. So as an organization, we're hopefully in focus and marching forward in the direction that this body sets for us, because at the end of the day, you're elected to have that, that vision for the community. You know, I'm, I'm the hired gun, I come in, I can tell you how it's been done in ten different towns, but I don't have my ear to the, well, I was going to say to the ground, but then the truck would hit me, you know, but I don't have my ear to the sentiment of the community. That's, that's what you all are elected for. So, I may have said already too much, but that is a way to help the Town Manager set goals for all the Department Heads and the budget, because most Town Managers' contracts will have a clause that they have to carry out all their goals, as long as you give them the resources to do them. Because, I mean, that's just, so anyways, I'll stop right there.
I'll just say, yeah, I'll let you respond, but I want to say, in response to that, I was looking at a community, it was either Sharon or Mansfield, because I remember I was looking at them the same night, and they essentially establish quarterly department goals that are downstream of the Select Board goals, so it's something interesting, and certainly not anything that we do, in terms of like, long-term planning, having like, department-specific goals that are formed as well.
Well, if you look at the very first goal, under Administration and Finance, that this town set for itself, quarterly reports with goal updates from all departments. So, Public Safety came in, presented their quarterly report, sat in front of the Select Board, you know, again, there's that balance, you know, because the Select Board then wants to, you know, just talk, to really get down into the nitty-gritty. Threading that needle's always extremely difficult, but then the Development Director, Development Inspection Services came in, and her team would give their report, and the Finance Team. And what this Select Board wanted was to make that part of their operating procedures.
So, Carter, I think that what you're saying is great, you know, something that I think I mentioned in a previous meeting was about aligning goals across departments, and I think that, you know, we're speaking of that, but my question to you is, you know, creating goals sometimes takes time, and for purposes of continuity, you know, does it make sense to move away from the fiscal year-to-fiscal year goals and move into a calendar year goal? And I ask that because I perceive that the benefit would be, you know, it allows, you know, if we go to a calendar year method, it allows this board to take some time, as we're taking now, we're almost in September, to kind of, we're in September, to set our goals. It allows the departments to then focus and have some time to set their goals, so that way from January to December, they can actually be implemented. And then also continuity, I think what sometimes happens when you, you know, get on a new board, when the elections happen in May, it's like everything's brand-new, but sometimes, you know, we should probably be picking up what was already done, continuing that out, seeing how it worked, and then that way, when we go into this goal process, especially with newer members, I think it may be helpful. What do you think about that?
Well, first, the budget's on a fiscal year cycle, so if you have goals that need to be done, it's the manager and then this board that needs to try to make sure that budget has enough resources to, to tackle that goal. Acquire new up-to-date voting equipment, sixteen thousand, two hundred. You know, the manager, administrator needed to make sure to put that money in the budget. So, I, I think having a process that aligns the goals with the fiscal year does make some sense. Also, remember, you have the change in the board paralleling fiscal year. So, to have a board in, you know, I, I would have to figure out exactly how this would work, but to have that board, you know, then there's, you get two new folks elected, this gives the newly-elected people an opportunity to kind of get their feet on the ground a little bit, especially if it's someone that's really new to how town government works. And so, they're there for July and August, June, July, August, and what happens in June? The annual appoint-a-thon, and the wiping of the sweat off the brow of, oh my God, thank God, town meeting's done, don't have to do that again, you know, for a year. And then in many towns, July and August is kind of a vacation, people are settling down, and so now by September, Labor Day-ish, the board, I think, kind of starts to coalesce together as a group, especially if you've had, you know, two out of the three members change, especially if you had the philosophy of the board change. I got hired by one town, and it was three, what I would call progressives, and two, what I would call conservatives, and when I showed up for work, it was completely the opposite way. So if we had tried to do the goals in February, when I initially got hired, they would have been completely out of line.
Okay.
By the time there. So, if this approach makes any sense to you, I would suggest you stick to the fiscal year.
Speaking to that, though, I do think there's some value in essentially waiting a couple months for the board to sort of, you know, come together, see how people are working, and for new members to get onboarded, and also for the goal-setting process to, one, be it like, a little longer and more thorough, but also be a little closer to like, budget season, too. But then, that sort of eats away.
Well, if you...
I would, I mean, I would personally disagree with that, because then you, you just, I mean, if, where we are now, we've lost a whole quarter, so that now we're down to nine months, and then...
If you do it in, let's say around Labor Day, shortly after Labor Day, by the end of the month, the manager or the administrator, someone's put all this together and handed them out at the staff meeting and said, okay, y'all got two weeks to be back here with, how realistic is this? What could you tackle this year? And some of these projects, in some cases, you know, are several phases. You know, you're kind of, you'll figure out the process you want to follow, the next year you'll go through that process, and then the next year after that, you need the money, kind of thing. So, by late September, the manager, administrator's kind of chatting with the staff, do you need money, when can you do it? By mid-October, this is back in front of the board, to say, here's kind of what we've got, what do you think of this? What do you want us to try to push around? Does this make some sense? And these are for three fiscal years. Then there's the unprogrammed, which is, you know, merit pay, the kind of stuff that everybody wants to do, but you'll never get to in your lifetime. That then around November one, allows the manager, administrator to prepare a guidance memo on the budget, you know, don't ask for any more staff, or you can only ask for staff if they're on the Select Board's goals, or make sure you include this, make sure you include that. And then, it really kind of, you can figure out your local timeframe to make all that kind of glide together. It sounds easier than it really is, but that really does align with your budget cycle, I think.
Oh, I, for budget goals, I think that works, I think for, I mean, some of these aren't budget goals, so, I mean, I think a budget cycle should be, like, to me, to me, this is something that Department Heads should have, that we should have access to seeing, but I think it's our job to come up with a strategy, and their job to come up with the tactics of how to achieve the strategy, right? This is the tactical sheet. This is, I need to do this, I need to do this, I need to do this, but these are, these are born out of an overarching idea that we want to do this, and our goal should be the larger part, and these should be the Department Heads and their sub-departments that come up with these. And I think this is great, by the way. I just don't, I don't see this as a goal, I see this as a result of a goal.
The implementation of them.
Right, the implementation of how to achieve a goal.
Right, yeah, I get that. Something I'll also say, just like my last comment, your response to it, is like, I generally don't think that these need to have like, a hard deadline, you know, but, I don't know, I'm generally a relaxed, nonchalant person, so maybe that's a reflection of my personality.
Would have to respectfully disagree.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's like, if it isn't written down, it doesn't exist. If there isn't a deadline, and I don't mean a, you know, drop dead deadline, but...
Right.
You know, when I sat with the police chief and the DPW Director here, two Fridays ago, or whatever, it was, okay, when are you going to get back out on Flat Hill Road and do this? What do you need? Well, we need this, okay, fine. What, what's that date? Can you have it to me by then? Yep, okay, and then we can present it to the Select Board on October 1st? Yep, and everybody agrees that's a reasonable kind of thing? Yep. Now I can say, you guys going to have that report to me tomorrow? How we doing?
Right, well, that, I mean, that's a strategy I use at work, too, and, and that's why, at the end of my goal, I said what I said, like, these are the actionable, these are the, these are the road markers to, to delineate progress, but the first thing I want to do is give it to the Department Heads and say, okay, this is what I want you to do, the first thing I want you to do is tell me, what is the schedule to get this done? You know, so, that's why I think getting goals earlier...
Yeah.
I, I, we've never had a problem in the past getting goals done by the beginning of the fiscal year. It's only in the last couple of years, or three years, that it's been, you know, that that has really been relaxed.
And what do you see as the cost of that?
I don't know, I may, I may broach the code of conduct, so I don't want to, I don't want to breach the code of conduct.
I mean, you can be respectful and politeful about it, I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, well, it comes from leadership, I mean, it has to be led by, it has to be forced, hey, listen, first of all, I think it has to be led by deadline, and then it has to be appeared to by the membership. That means you got to get, you got to get people to submit goals, and, and people have to be pressured to, to do the work.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, I know.
And that's, that's a problem. You know, so, I mean, that's why we didn't get them done, but in the past, and, and sometimes in the past, we've gotten terrible, you know, really goals that were fluff goals, like, there was no, there was like, pinning jello to a tree. So, but some of them were good goals, I mean, like, you know, some of them we did, and they were multiple years, like, addressing the, the primary school...
Right.
Was one that was lasting several years, and it got on, and we did get it done to a degree, there was one action we didn't do, because Town Meeting didn't vote us the money. So, it has been done, I just think we need to take a better picture, and I will say, one of the problems we have is the non-existence of this. So, this, this has been a problem, and this is something directly under our control, because this is a Town Manager issue, and these things should have been implemented. Now, all the vacancies and holes in the, in the, in the organizational chart has definitely affected that, but these are the, we need a playbook, so if any time when a police chief, or a fire chief, or, you know, DPW comes in front of us, we have, what are the things on your list? And we should not be reminiscing about it like, oh my God, who has the best memory? It should just be right in front of us, what they're working on. And I'd like to see more of this-ism implementation.
Sounds good.
I have a couple of thoughts on this. I like this plan, whether it is our goals, or whether it's something else that we asked the Town Manager to come up with, the plan that Carter presented for us, but I, this is one of the reasons why I put, as my first goal, is revamping this process, because I think that we should set goals for us this year, but I don't think that we could have enough time to vet out doing something this in-depth. But I, I would like to look more and see other options, that's why I set that as one of my goals, and I think that's still important, in my opinion, because I do think this is great, and maybe we look at more things like this, and we implement that as a Town Manager goal.
I agree with you fully.
Even for the board to be able to enunciate a vision, an overall vision, you know, we may have to help some of those Department Heads imagine the tactics to carry out that broad, because they're not trained that way. I mean, that's, you're in business, you're, you know, scientific basis, you construct things, I mean, you all are used to that. Here's what the boss says, the vision is, what am I going to be doing to help deliver that? So I think even that would be very helpful to the staff, quite frankly.
No, I like your first goal for that very reason. Like, one of the things that, that was said was, in, when Caesar put forward his goals, was that, well, that's the way other towns have done it, and why do we have to do it this way? And you know what? That's a valid point, maybe we should revisit how it should be done, and I think that's why I think your goal spoke to that. I mean, I think it's taking us too long, maybe to answer your question, why, why it's been a problem in the last few years, you know, maybe we, again, we have no standard operating procedure, we set goals, we should, we should establish what the guidelines of the goals are, what is the vision of what is in scope or out of scope for what our goals should be. So, that's why I think it was an excellent goal for those reasons.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think, I mean, I can think back on some of the challenges, you know, some of the private conversations I've, I've had with the Town Manager, and there was always concern about, you know, that we're adding to the plate. And so I think, you know, and if we can do it in a way that's not blind, you know, and I think that that was, again, that was a concern, that we're adding to the plate without understanding what's on the plate. And that's why I think that, you know, Tom's goal, the one that you've proposed here, makes a lot of sense, because I think it helps give clarity to the plate. But I do think, it sounds like what we're saying so far is that we're all in agreement on number one, as proposed by Amanda. The only thing I would modify is in 1B, when it says, gather input from Department Heads and key stakeholders, I think what it sounds like, we're looking for more of an alignment, that we're looking for Department Heads to kind of align their department goals, you know, with the goals of the, of the Select Board. I don't know if that's a separate addition, I don't want to take away from the intent, and then when it gets to, you know, D, when it says engage the public, I would modify that to say engage the public and key stakeholders in goal-setting, but that would...
Well, I, I see the gather input from Department Heads and key stakeholders, et cetera, to inform the goal-setting process. I think it's both parts, right? It's setting goals that are broad enough and can be... It's setting goals that are broad enough and can be implemented with departments, so that maybe they could set their own goals downstream of the ones that we set. But also having some input, right, at the beginning of the goal-setting process, so that we know where departments are when we start the goal-setting process, too, is I think what you were getting at. Because that's certainly valuable to have.
Yeah, because you started talking about, you know, something in a department, and meanwhile, they have something heavy on the plate, and there's no time to do it. You know, having that sense of awareness, and then I think the key is collaboration.
Yes.
And I think that, you know, that's, I, I've talked about collaboration before, but I think that anything we do that moves towards collaboration, you know, I think it's mindful of the reality that, you know, the way that kids are being educated, and now it's, it's, you know, most people who are roughly, I, I, I mean, it started around the time I was getting out of school, so somewhere around forty-five and below, the whole process is this collaborative learning environment. You know, it's moved away from the rows and columns that I had throughout all of elementary and middle school. And in high school, it started becoming more of those small group kind of settings. And now, like, when we go into the schools, that's what we see primarily, is those, so, you know, and I see it in the workforce, that people who are growing up in the school environment, they don't work well when they're in silos. They work better when they can collaborate. So anything that we can do to promote collaboration, to me, is, is just a better approach, generally.
Yeah, and I'll just say honestly, like, I'm really happy with where we're at so far in this process. And to, to go back to what Tom said, I don't think we're going to have the issue of not having enough goals this year. You know, we're going to have to whittle down the goals that we have, because we came prepared, and I think a lot of us had really good ideas. I mean, I have six pa, I blew up the font, because I'm going to share it on the screen, so people can read it at home, but six pages of goals, you know? I think that's a really good starting place. And I think that we have done a really good job of making this a little more collaborative, and sort of breaking down the silo of the select board, and actually viewing it as, you know, well, like, for me, when I created my goals, I reached out to chairs on other committees. I spoke to Heather, you know, I, there was a lot of collaboration that went into the creation of what I proposed, so.
So how do you want us to tackle this? Like, man at a time, or?
Um, I'm, yes and no. So I, I did compile everything, because it's easier for me to edit and omit, but I have everything that you have in you as well in the document. So everything that was typed and sent to me is in one document. I want to start by talking about the high-level goals. Typically, what we do is we have, like, one, like, goal statement or whatever, that's the topic, and then there are objectives, so there are, like, you know, subtasks or whatever to achieve that. I want to start with the higher-level goals, just to reword them, figure out the order that we want, and then we can start going goal to goal and talking about the objectives.
May I just ask a, a process question?
Yeah, sure.
You said you'd talk to some of the chairman, goals need to be aligned. Have you ever done, or do you do, a annual all boards meeting?
No, but that sounds like a good goal for us to have.
Yeah, way in the past, no.
Were they successful at all, Tom?
They were, I mean, again, I don't, they were reasonably successful, I mean, by, by that, I mean, it's like saying it's partly cloudy or partly sunny, so it's a rose-colored glasses view.
Yeah. No, I mean, if you get fifty percent of the folks there, that's a pretty good turnout.
To my, to my mind, whether you're doing, you know, a charrette, or you're doing a, a listening session, or you're doing a joint meeting, they're only successful insofar as they're moderated well, okay? And that has always been an issue, you know, that's all, who moderates it can have a direct impact on the value of what you get out of it. So, so some of them were successful because of that, some of them weren't successful because of that. And, and people's preparation is also a big thing, too, so.
Thank you.
Yep, they're also hard, it's also very hard to get boards, you can get, it was hard enough getting board chairs, which is a much smaller number.
Right.
But getting boards together is very difficult.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I went ahead and shared my screen, might take a second for it to actually show up in the feed, but we can just start going at the goals then. We're going to have to wait, so you guys can actually see it.
We can see it.
Okay, cool. I can't see it on mine, because I see the public access feed, so I'm talking about the public, the public can't see it. All right, so goal number one is implement changes to improve the quality of the town as an employer, addressing the issues of recruitment, retention, overall work environment. We can wordsmith that, but it's basically just staffing. I'll scroll down, just read them all first. Goal number two, conduct long-term budget analysis that balances the need to deliver quality services to residents and the various financial challenges the town and residents experience. So that's the budget. Goal number three, continue to address the needs of our aging municipal buildings by finalizing a long-term municipal building plan. Just want to point out that was mentioned by chairs as well, is something that we should include in our goals. Goal number four, revamp the select board and town manager goal-setting process. Goal number five, increase transparency and availability of information to the public. And then goal number six, which I have, that Tom listed as an objective here, the format is a little different, so we'll need to work on that. Work through the town manager, assistant town manager slash HR director, and the department heads to initially create, to periodically review, and to develop insecure plans, policies, and procedures to keep current the following. And-
Which goal, as you prepare them, encompasses the revamping the select board and town manager goal-setting process?
That is its own goal.
I missed that?
Number four.
You did, goal number four, revamp the select board and town manager goal-setting process.
Okay.
So I will just do an overview of this again. So number one is staffing. Number two is budget. Number three is municipal buildings. Number four is goals. Number five is increasing transparency and availability of information to the public. And then six, which we can either include under staffing, because it's kind of staffing-related, or figure out how we're going to rework it, is Tom's goal. So what do we think of both the order and the wording of those goals?
My opinion is, I would like to, I think it would be, I think that it may be helpful to bite chunks off. We've already been talking about, you know, number four, and maybe that's a good point to pick it up.
Start on number four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Since we, I think we've already talked through this for a bit of time.
Sure, but I was thinking of getting the higher-level order of the goals and the wording, and then going into the objectives.
Okay.
But if we want to just jump right into the goal, goal-setting goal, we can do that.
I don't think the goals should be ranked by, like, this is our priority-wise.
Okay, that was also a point of discussion, too.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I would want to put a priority on them.
Okay, yeah, that's fair. Are we all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw some heads nod, so, all right, cool. So then we'll just start with this one, then, since we're, we've been talking about it.
Before we go there, could we, never mind, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so goal number four, revamp the select board and town manager goal-setting process. Do we want to change the wording of that at all? It's pretty straightforward. All right. Objective one, establish a formula, a formal annual goal-setting process by creating a structured timeline that aligns with the fiscal planning cycle to ensure timely and effective setting and reviewing of goals.
I'm fine with it as written.
Okay. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion that's going to have to go into that, to actually figure out what we want to change about this process. If we want to put it in a policy to formalize it, so we can sort of have those as ongoing discussions.
Yeah, I, I think my intention on that was, as we're setting the process, the process would be a policy, so hopefully-
Yeah.
Yeah, I was sort of seeing that as well. Objective two, gather input from department heads and key stakeholders to develop a methodical approach to collect insights and feedback from various town departments and community stakeholders to inform the goal-setting process.
Can you say again, Micah Ray, what you were suggesting on that?
Yeah, so I was, I was, I, I believe I suggested modifying what is, I guess, now objective three.
Two.
We're not on three yet?
Yep.
We're just on two right now.
Yep, but I was suggesting modifying, I think, no, objective four, by taking that phraseology of key stakeholders out of number, out of B. Number, let me talk according to the sheet Caesar has. Looking at objective number two, I think that the phraseology of key stakeholders, I would move that into four. Into objective number four, engage the public and key stakeholders. Because how do we define key stakeholders? Like, you know, I think department heads are critical for the implementation of any goals, but key stakeholders includes the public, it includes other boards. You know, there's a lot of other entities there, and I, and sometimes I think if you give an idea, it allows other people to kind of come and give some feedback. And if we have a good policy that we're going to create, you know, we can solicit ideas in that, in the process of engaging the public from, I think, a lot of those key stakeholders. But I see it as the department heads are, are going to provide some really critical how-to here, and that is a little different than what other boards and committees may contribute.
Is, is this done in conjunction, conjunction or collaboration with the town manager?
I would expect so.
Probably, yeah, mm-hmm.
I mean, I would hope so, but do we need to capture that?
We can.
Got it, and, put from the town manager and department heads?
It's, the overarching goal is revamp select board and town manager goal-setting process.
So I'm assuming-
So are, are both involved in all of the objectives below?
Well, we could, and so I can offer possible solutions, since we don't have a town manager and that person doesn't have goals. This could be a shared goal, so that you wouldn't have to specifically mention the town manager. This could be a shared select board, town manager goal. Because it, it talks about both, select board and town manager goal-setting processes.
Yeah, it's not an and/or, so.
I'm not dense putting it in, but I don't, I think it's inherent in the definition.
The way that I would see this, too, in terms of how it would, like, actually be implemented, is probably the town manager would be getting all of this feedback and information from the department heads, and then sharing it with us, probably. Okay, so how do we want to modify objective two? What are the specific edits, edits we want to make here?
What I'm proposing is just removing the language key stakeholders and adding it into objective four. But from Amanda, I mean, what were you envisioning for that? Like, the differentiation between the key stakeholders and the department heads?
I think I was thinking about boards and committee members, things like that, in that point, but maybe that does belong more at the end. It's hard, because you want to get, you want to get insight and feedback, but at the same time, we also have to still move the process forward. So I would be fine personally with moving key stakeholders down to four, I don't know if-
Well, I mean, is, did you intend for this to be, like, a, a time ordered? Like, was objective one, then objective two?
No.
Okay, so they can overlap and, all right.
Yep, I was just setting goals personally, go ahead.
To me, the difference between objective two and objective four is one is internal to the town, and one is external to the town hall. So I would say that removing the key stakeholders and community stakeholders, and replacing, replacing key stakeholders with, and person, and town, and key personnel, that would keep it inside the town, and then objective four could be public-facing.
Well, do we want to, like, specify department heads, instead of just saying key stakeholders, to Amanda's point? Do we want to just say something about including something from other boards? Do we, do we want their input formally?
I like what, what Tom just said, what he said, if we change it to personnel, then objective two really is about staff.
Well, I think you should also capture, I think you should also capture other boards, too, so you're right. So you should say, collect input from department heads and town personnel, and then also town boards and commit, you know, very, you know, town-
Okay.
Boards, committees, and commissions.
So say, gather input from department heads and town personnel, comma, including, um-
As well as.
As well as.
Yep.
Or you can list it, three things, comma, comma.
As well as-
Yeah, you could just put commas.
Yeah, you can comma.
Other boards, com-
Are you doing this in real time?
I am.
Okay.
Committees, and that's the only way I can keep track of all this, and commissions. Okay, cool. To, et cetera.
To develop a methodical approach to collect insights and feedback from various town departments, and then to inform the goal-setting process.
Yeah, cool.
And as a nitpicky thing-
Sure.
I, I learned that not everyone is on a board, committee, or commission, that there's other groups of things, task force, et cetera. Should we just call them multi-member, multi-member bodies?
Sure, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, but you could say town elected and appointed bodies, there you go. That makes it easier.
As well as elected and appointed town bodies.
Yep.
All right, so now you got me reading word by word.
That's what we're doing.
Input from department.
But this just hit me, so gather input to develop a methodical approach to collect insights and feedback. To inform goal-setting process. So, to develop a methodical approach. So this reads as gathering input from department heads and, and personnel, or whatever we land on there, to develop the approach to collect feedback. It, it's, why not just-
Yeah, I also now confuse myself for reading that.
Yeah, okay.
We can get rid of selecting a methodical, I mean, this reads as, we're just going to work with them to come up with the approach to do that.
Right.
But are we not going to actually collect the feedback?
So you're saying eliminate methodical approach?
Yeah, gather input.
All right, so this is what I have now. Gather input from department heads and town personnel, as well as elected and appointed town bodies, to collect insights and feedback to inform the goal-setting process.
Sounds great.
I think gather input to inform the goal-setting process.
That sounds great.
The input is the feedback.
Yep. All right, let's move on to objective three. Set measurable and transparent goals by implementing clear, quantifiable benchmarks for success. Ensuring goals are transparent and progress can be regularly reviewed and communicated.
Agree.
I'm fine with that.
That's good. Objective four, engage the public in goal-setting by utilizing public forums, surveys, and digital platforms to involve community members in the goal-setting process, ensuring their needs and perspectives shape town policies.
It's fine the way it is.
So that, that one is, the thing to keep in mind there is to give it the lead time.
Well, we're not supposed to be doing the goal, we're just supposed to be creating the goal.
I know, but I'm just thinking, like, hey, you put this goal down, how are you going to do it?
I, I've thought about that, and that could be a public hearing, it could be a Google forum that we sent out.
It says how you do it.
It does say.
By public forums, surveys, and digital platforms.
I know, I know, no, I'm just saying that they can't, it, it can't be a last-minute thing, and it, it would fall into kind of an ongoing.
No, well, that's, but the objective one is the most important. That's why you have to set an annual goal-setting process by structuring a timeline.
Right, so my thought process is-
That is critical to the whole thing.
Having the timeline, and then that part would be included in our timeline, which is realistically, we won't be implementing this new process this year. We'll be creating it and fleshing it out, and then implementing it next year, was my original thought process.
So objective one enables objectives two, three, and four.
Doesn't enable it, I mean, the, settling the schedule is one thing, and-
No, setting, setting the scheduling.
Setting the scheduling and the, and the structured timeline is one thing, and then what is included in that timeline is objectives two, three, and four.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the other three, I guess, are almost like sub-objectives.
So this is when all this has to happen, and then this is what happens at these points.
Yeah, and four I really see as like a public hearing and a form that gets sent out online for people to submit their feedback.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
My only comment is the very end of objective four, we say ensuring their needs and perspectives shape town policies. I think that's also applicable to objective two, so is there a way to take that language and, and add it somewhere up in either the overall goal or in objective one?
I think the last five, four words of objective two equate to the last phrase of objective four. So to inform goal-setting process is-
We can just say two involve community members in the goal-setting process, just end it there.
I was just going to say, actually using the word ensuring makes me a little nervous now that I'm reading it again, like, I, just because someone fills it out, we're not, I don't want to make a promise that we're going to use every single person's-
Just because someone gives us their feedback doesn't mean it's going to become a town policy.
I didn't really think about it again until we're saying these things out loud.
I think, I think now the, the magnifying glass is way too close.
No, that's okay, though, that's-
It made a pin, made a pinhole in my-
The purpose of the workshop.
This is more.
Yeah, we could stop it at process, sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
All right, so this looks good to me, how's it look to everyone else? All right, cool. So, we started with that one, because we were sort of already talking about it, let's just go all the way up to the top now. And this is definitely the biggest one. And I also, Tom, I didn't know how we were going to proceed with yours, so I did two things. I added it to the end of this document I'm working on, word for word, as you submitted it. But I also, since it is staffing-related, I put them in this one as well, so we'll, we'll cover that. So, all right, the first sentence, goal number one, implement changes to improve the quality of the town as an employer, addressing the issues of recruitment, retention, and overall work environment. How do we feel about that sentence?
If I may comment, I see what Tom has proposed as a goal as distinctively separate from this. I think that there's overlap, but I think that they are distinctively different.
Cool, that's fine. We'll just have to wordsmith it, since the format's a little different, but, all right.
So I don't know if it, and I- So, I don't know if it, and I, Mr., I want to be respectful to your process. It may be easier for us to go through Tom's goal, identify what we're going to keep in there, because it sounds like the majority of us agree with it, and then differentiate-
And then come back to everything else, staffing-related?
It, it may be easier.
Alright, yeah, I'm fine with that. Alright, so let's go to Tom's goal. So, objective, so we'll have to rephrase that to goal. Work through the town manager, assistant town manager slash HR director, and the department heads to initially create, to periodically review, and to develop and secure plans, policies, and procedures to keep current the following. So let's just start modifying it now. So instead of objective, we'll say it's goal, I don't even know what number, hold on, let me scroll up and see. It's goal number 6.
Can we just end it after procedures?
Yep, that's actually what I was going to suggest. Uh, so we'll turn into a sentence by removing "to keep current the following", and then the actions are going to become objectives. Alright, so objective-
Hold on, why did we remove the, why did we stop?
Because we're just, we're changing the format so it fits into the rest of the goals. Because typically it's goal, right, sentence, and then Objective 1, Objective 2. And you did an objective, objective instead of goal and then actions instead of objectives.
But you're not changing the sentence.
But the goal, but the goal, right, but the goal, the goal has three specific objectives, you know, things that it's addressing. It's not just secure plans, policies, and procedures. So, I mean, you haven't, it hasn't said anything in the, in the front then.
No, look at the, he just changed-
Yeah.
Objective 1 to goal 6.
This is pretty much all I'm doing, so Objective 1.
Action to it.
This said objective, now it says goal. That's, that's literally all that has changed. And then here-
Were, were you deleted "to keep current the following"?
Right. And then it said here, now it's a, a period, right? It said to keep current-
I don't know what it said.
The following. So we're just getting the formatting consistent between the goals, that's all. Substantially, it's not changing.
Well, again, it's, I'm not going to, yeah, this is not the hill, so that's fine.
I, I actually, I, I don't think it is the hill, but I think that to keep current the following, I'm going to propose a addition here. I think that that phraseology might be appropriate.
Okay.
But we can come back to it.
I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm, my OCD doesn't really like it, but I don't want to come back to it, since we're here, let's just work on it now. Alright, so we'll keep this one as the special one. Alright, so these are actions instead of objections.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what it says, right?
Yeah, but I thought we were changing goals and objectives.
We can totally charge it to objectives, I mean, it's fine. I just used the format that we've used for the last several years, but it's not relevant.
I used the one that we used for the past several years, so I don't know where that
We, we've gone back and forth. We've used objectives and, uh, actions, we've used goals and objectives.
It's just a label.
Yeah, it's really not.
Same thing.
Alright, so the first action is complete and thorough? Oh, keep, yep.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I see. To keep current the following, semicolon, 1, complete and thorough organization chart of the entire town personnel excluding schools, including defined areas of each department and any other subdivisions thereof.
I actually like that sentence, but I'm with you on the-
The formatting?
Formatting, that's the OCD thing also.
Detail-oriented, yeah, that's fine.
But, um-
It doesn't matter to me.
Tom, is the intent, let me, if I may ask, is the intent that, I mean, that, not just that these things get created, but I, I see to periodically review.
Right.
And so a policy then is going to come out of this that enables a periodic review of the org chart, of the, you know, everyone's job descriptions.
There are, there are several action verbs. Initially create.
Yep.
That's number one. Periodically review.
Yep.
And then develop and secure plans, policies, and procedures is three. So there's three action verbs.
You're saying all three of those things for each of these actions.
Right.
I don't know why my brain wasn't comprehending that, but I got you now.
Yeah, I get it. Alright, so do we want to change anything on that first one?
No.
Nope.
Alright, the second one. A complete and thorough listing of each job title and each town employee in a full job description of each.
My only thought here is because I was so involved with, um, the Personnel Committee, which became a very contentious process, the town has started this.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
I don't believe it's finished. I still think it needs to be done, but just being mindful of the work that's already been done by the Assistant Town Manager and the Personnel Committee, um, and realizing that this might not be a goal that can be accomplished in one year.
And that may, yeah.
It is my understanding that they worked through all of the job descriptions and that that work was completed.
I think it's similar to what I suggested to you on the revenues. To go through every job description all at once burns out people. And if you put them on a cycle, public works this year.
Sure.
And then you involve the employees and here's the job description, what aren't you doing anymore? What are you doing? New. That, that becomes much more manageable for the, the staff.
I would concur with that, yep.
And probably by the time you get through the last department, it's time to cycle back to the first and review if it's still-
Yeah, I mean, think in terms of three to five-year cycles, you know, depending on what fits your needs.
So it's an ongoing.
So I think that, by the way that this is written, with creating, reviewing, and developing these policies and these plans, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to do all of that this year.
Right.
We can develop the plan that says this, it's going to be a three to five-year cycle.
Well, my last paragraph is, is-
Yep.
I want to know from them, how long is it going to take you? Because, again, if you let somebody, and I think Carter referenced this, if you let somebody decide, hey, I'm not going to tell you how long it's going to take, I'm going to have you, you know your time, how long is it going to take? And then whatever time they take, then I'm going to come back to them in that time and say, okay, where is it? I didn't tell you the time, you told me the time.
Yeah, that's fair. And I don't know if I read the last sentence, so I'll read it. Um, so, actions 1, 2, 3, and then action 3 is a comprehensive and concise set of standard operating procedures for each department consisting of, but not necessarily limit to, the recurring processes, daily, monthly, quarterly operations, the personnel and resources involved in those processes, and escalation path for each. Sounds good to me. And then the conclusion here is, the first order of business in this goal is for the town manager, assistant town manager slash HR director, and department heads to confer and establish a timeline for all to follow and scheduled touchpoints, not fewer than one per quarter, at which the select board will hear progress on this goal and provide feedback.
Yep.
I think it's great.
And if we tailor that or dovetail that with what Carter is suggesting, this will generate a whole bunch of lines here-
Yep.
That can be followed.
The only, what I want to add into this is, um, you know, a couple of years ago, while reviewing our bylaws, uh, we had a technologic, technology review board. And at that time, I approached the town manager, I said, hey, we have this in the bylaws, but this board doesn't actually exist, um, and should we get this created? Uh, and then somehow in the, um, bylaw review, that was one thing that was omitted from the bylaws and that, that whole board was deleted. Um, and I think in hindsight, it probably was the appropriate thing to do, because I don't know if, if the public is always in the best position to know how staff, the resources staff need to do their job, um, but I think that we need to replicate something like that. So what I'm suggesting, and I don't know how this, in the very end of action number 3, um, the note is that the personnel and resources involved in those processes, and I, I'm suggesting a separate action, which is, um, identifying the technological resources critical to staff performance and their cyclical maintenance schedule. I think that one thing that we've become critically aware of is that our systems that we're using, many of them are outdated, um, that there are maintenance schedules that are more frequent than what we've been using. And so I think having that awareness of that, so that way it's on the forefront, not so much for us, but for the town manager, the department heads, if they're reporting on this stuff, you know, sometimes you might hesitate to be like, wait a minute, we just got all these new computers, but we're still using a system from 2010. Like, maybe someone's going to catch this. And so it should trigger an action of like, you know, so what are your thoughts on adding in that action or do you see it distinctive or in the same? Okay.
Alright, so let's wordsmith it. I will type what you say.
Alright, what I, what I initially said, and I just wrote it down, was identify technological resources, uh, critical-
Limited just to technology resources? Or is there any other, could this encompass anything else?
It could, but I, I think I'm thinking technology, but, yeah, we can get to it, but yeah. Identify technological resources critical to staff performance and their cyclical maintenance schedule.
Alright, it's there. Do we want to change the wording at all? Are we good with that?
No, I'm fine with that.
Alright, cool.
I'm fine with that. I think that's an important one for staff as well, you know, from an internal side that, that they'd like to see and have access to as well.
Yep.
Alright, cool. Anything else we want to change on this one?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, so we'll go back up to the top.
Alright, so we have 1 and 2.
Okay, so this one is especially, I guess, specifically related to like listening sessions and implementing any sort of changes that come about it. So, town manager and assistant town manager will conduct listening sessions and select board will implement changes in policy and operating practices or bring forth articles at town meeting as applicable.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
This one is a combination of yours and mine.
Yes, so there, yeah. I added some of the staffing-related ones to it as well. So like I see the recognition policy 1 is here, um-
Well, 8, 9, and 10, we just, those are mine, so you can-
I know, I can remove those.
Right.
Yep.
Carter, do you expect with the listening sessions, that you'll have proposals, changes that you think that will need to propose, or that you'll propose for policy changes for us? Do you think that this is a-
It's, it's hard for me to say. Today was not, um, well-attended. Um, we had, I think, nine or 10 people. I mean, certainly we've had some, we've had some specific things percolating in the back of our mind related to recruiting. And a reward recognition program. But we will have some proposals for the fall town.
And we did also like think back to last year when we changed like our sick leave policy, that was like specifically related to feedback that we got from an employee. So if we do these like quarterly or something, you know, we might find things like that or related to like the sick leave bank, you know, there definitely are things that come out.
Sick leave bank came up today.
Yep.
Then the question becomes, how do you interface things you know might be the right thing to do, SAP, but collective bargaining? You know, how do you, how do you line those things up? So you're doing the right thing, but you're respecting each process. I think my phrase is it's a challenge.
Yeah. It is why this verbiage is here, as applicable.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I, the, select board will implement changes is, you know, I, I know, I know you, you've just hung a lot on the words as applicable, but still, the operating environment, I mean, a lot of this would go to collective bargaining, a lot of it would go to the Personnel Committee, a lot of it would go directly to the HR Director. I don't know what the role of the select board is in these, in, basically transferring what you hear in the listening sessions to policies and operating, I mean, do we, do we make, I have to look through our policy guide and operating practices. I don't know that we make any that affect like the day-to-day operations of personnel in town.
We can just remove the select board.
Or just put in there that the summary or takeaway from those listening sessions will be communicated and shared with the select board.
I'm okay with just removing it. So it's town manager and assistant town manager will conduct listening sessions and will implement changes in policy and operating practices or bring forth articles at town meeting as applicable. Or is that a little too vague?
No.
The town manager may not necessarily have the ability to implement changes in policy and operating practices, but we can certainly make recommendations-
Right.
On appropriate-
There we go. So I would change implement to recommend. And I would change as applicable to as necessary.
Okay.
Even necessary is not the exact right word.
No, appropriate.
Appropriate, there you go.
Yeah, alright.
There you go, I like that. And you have to change less letters because you have the APP already.
Alright, so do we want to keep that one as it is?
Well, I wanted to offer just a general comment. So generally, I like the goal. I think as we kind of walk down this though, I think that, um, so what I, I think if we were to change this goal broadly to establishing policies in collaboration with the town manager, HR director, that improves employee recruitment, retention, overall work environment. If, if we rephrase that goal and then underneath it, we then identify what we want this policy to do. That we want this policy to establish an annual climate survey. We want this policy to, um, person, uh, identify, you know, have an avenue, I'm looking at Objective 4, have an avenue to identify, bring forward to town meeting personnel-related warrant articles. You know, I think even incorporating some things from Objective 1, uh, that establishes that the town manager will conduct, you know, staff meetings, listening sessions, that I think, you know, it's a bigger thing, but I think really the action here is on HR and the town manager. I think that they are critical to the, the product that comes out of this, but I, I see the product being, we create a policy that says, you need to do these things, you need to have these things in place. Um, you know, even tapping into what's in the, um, charter that says performance reviews, you need to conduct them and have a process for it. That I think if we were to be a little more broad on this one and a little, it, it reads a little hands-on, uh, but I think if we were a little more broad, I like that approach a little more than just, I, again, conceptually I agree, but how we break it down, I, I probably don't fully agree.
Alright, so what do you want to actually modify here?
But I want to discuss it with, you know, but what I would suggest is modifying the goal itself and, and instead of, you know, implement changes to improve, I mean, how do we implement changes? We implement changes through policy. So, you know, create a policy. Uh, establish policies or policy in collaboration with the town manager that improves employee recruitment, retention, and the overall work environment.
Alright.
I'm fine with it.
So establish policies with the collaboration of the town manager to improve-
Yeah, I said in collaboration with. Uh, establish policies in collaboration with.
And HR director?
Yes.
Yes, it's good. Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Good.
Anything else you were recommending?
So then, as we then go down and we start with town manager and I would, similar to kind of what Tom did on the goal he proposed, an overall work environment that, and then we list what we want this policy to do, you know, so, and again, in the goal, ending the goal with an overall work environment that, and then we list what we're achieving here. So like the first thing is that establishes a schedule or requirement for, you know, staff meetings and listening sessions.
Okay. Establishes, what'd you say? A schedule?
A schedule or expectation.
For the town manager, assistant town manager to conduct listening sessions and recommend changes in policy.
I like adding and staff meetings.
And staff meetings, to conduct listening sessions and staff meetings.
Okay.
And I, again, formatting wise, that, I think that approach might make this a little easier to work through.
All right, cool. So do we?
Yeah, I would.
What'd you say?
I just want to read how you.
Oh, all right, I'll read it. That establishes a schedule for the town manager and assistant town manager to conduct listening sessions and staff meetings and recommend changes in policy and operating practices or bring forth articles at town meeting as appropriate.
I would delete everything after staff meetings, and I think that we're getting into something a little different.
And do we have to put HR director?
I wouldn't delete it, but add it as a second, no. What was that?
Always have assistant town manager slash HR director.
Yeah, that's fine.
We do a search and replace at the end?
We just say HR director.
Don't like establish, establishes.
What'd you say?
I'm just, I'm maybe up being.
Yeah, establishes, establishes, I see, I hear you, I agree.
Goal number one is established.
Creates.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Creates instead of a.
Creates.
Yeah. I don't know about the second half of that though, about and recommend changes, that might be something further down, you know, that, I think in the goal-setting process that we are going to be working on, we may be achieving this already.
You're suggesting ending it at staff meetings?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
If we can, I would recommend between conduct and, conduct and listening, I would put regular or periodic, one of the two.
I like regular.
Yeah.
I like the word smithing.
We could, you know, I mean, all of us are professionals.
I know, no, I entirely expected that we would be doing this. All right, so we like that one? Can we move on? I see two members very intently staring at the board.
No, I'm reading the second one.
Hold on, hold on a second, just one second. Okay. In the, in the opening goal stash, if I may recommend that we put the word by instead of that.
Yeah.
And then create an active verb, so by creating, we just put a bunch of ing words.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
All right, we'll go with the gerents.
Say ing words?
They're called gerents.
Yeah, gerents.
Called what?
Gerend.
Gerend.
Yeah.
Why do I not remember that?
Gerend is when you use that as a noun, like swimming.
You're right.
Yes.
But that's, but creating is being used as a verb.
Yeah, it's an action.
I'm just impressed, I'm just impressed that all of you know what that word was because I didn't.
Okay.
So then, objective two then becomes implementing.
Yeah. All right, so let's move on to objective two. So implementing an annual climate survey policy for regular feedback on job satisfaction, workplace environment, and communication with management and implement changes in policy and operating practices as appropriate. So we're not doing this anymore.
Management, yeah.
Yeah.
I would delete the word policy because it's already in the goal.
Yeah.
Wait, communication.
So implementing an annual climate survey for regular feedback on job satisfaction, workplace environment, and communication.
With management? Did you want to delete that?
With management, yes. Thank you, I had that back in.
I'm good with that.
Are we good with that? All right. Objective three, ensure the town has functioning ERP software that meets the needs of the organization and assists, oops, oh no, and assist the town manager in efforts to mitigate and resolve related issues.
I would delete.
You would delete? I just want to say this was included by everyone I asked.
Would this be?
Needs to be a goal.
Would this be with the budgeting goal?
Yeah.
It could be. I think I originally had it under the budget and then moved it up to staff because it impacts staff, I mean, I think we all know it's, you know, having a serious impact on, you know, staff and how they do their job.
But I think based on the other goal in which we're getting the updates on technology and their cyclical.
Right, I was going to bring it up that this is going to, it sort of falls under that, but we can either keep it or remove it and have it fall under that, but I do think it's kind of worthwhile for us to at least capture, like, this is something that is a big deal for us right now, you know, it should be captured in a goal.
But do we want a policy that says, I mean, a policy that says you need to have a functioning ERP?
Well, that's, we modified it.
This is not really officially an ERP.
Yes, it is.
Is it?
It markets itself as one.
Yeah.
Whether it really is or not, but it does market it.
It's not a functioning one.
I just thought it was an accounting, financial and accounting system, not necessarily.
That's how we use it.
Yeah.
But it does have.
Has a lot more modules.
The other features and modules that we don't necessarily use.
Yeah, there's a lot of other things, we just use it for payroll and, yeah.
I think including this as a goal is important, at least for staff to know that we're continually working on it and we're not just ignoring it, but I don't think it belongs in this.
In this one, you want to move it to budget-related?
That's where I think we should put it.
Because we use it, we don't really use it as an ERP, we use it as budgeting.
I see, yeah, yeah.
If you had Workday or something that was more of an HR.
Right, because we're talking about going to, unless we're talking.
I'm just going to paste it down here and then we'll revisit it. I don't know where it is actually. There it is, all right, we'll come back to that. All right, I think I originally had it under budgeting and then I was like, well, this is really about like the kind of workplace we are, you know, the issues we've been having, so I may have moved it. All right, cool.
I don't know if objective three fits anymore either.
Sure, that's fine. Yeah, because we, well, can you specifically say what we did that addresses this? I agree, but I'm not sure what you're, which one you're referring to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it needs to be a goal, it's something we have to do no matter what.
The personnel committee one, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and we have to, we have to.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, there was the time, now personnel committee is appointed.
Right.
Presumably we could appoint ourselves, but I'm not really a big fan of the board of selectmen acting instead because we don't have a committee and we should just work to get people to appoint to that committee.
Yeah.
Go back to those letters that we talked about sending out.
All right.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, Mr. Chairman, do you have my letter yet?
Do I have what?
The letter.
Which letter? Oh, no, but I will, he said the end of the week, I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to be a fantastic letter. All right, anyway.
All right, so we took that one out?
Yep. So now we're moving on to creating a town-wide employee recognition policy to recognize and reward staff achievements and milestones through formal recognition programs and events to boost morale and encourage high performance.
I think that, you know, as, as you mentioned, the performance reviews, I'm not sure whether that should be a goal or an objective also, but I think whatever we implement here or whatever policy we create has to be followed through because we can't continue to have things as a town that aren't followed through, so I don't want this to be seen as lip service. I want it to be something that we actually put time into.
Yeah.
Can I steal it from someplace else, is that okay?
Hmm? Oh, yeah.
If I steal it from someplace else where I've already written it?
I am all about using other towns and it's like, we don't need to recreate the wheel. If something works, let's implement it.
Yeah, because I think even for number four, what you're speaking to likely ties into professional development.
More than that behind it, Tom.
Because it's, you know, as you develop professional development, how you monitor professional development is through annual performance reviews.
So would it be?
So I think it would, I think, I think it would be four, what's currently listed as four would be where we.
Wait, didn't Tom, didn't Tom have performance reviews?
No.
Yeah, so.
Mine doesn't have performance reviews.
What's now objective four is develop a professional development policy to support continuous learning and career growth through training programs, workshops, and educational opportunities backed by policies that encourage and facilitate staff development.
Wait, did we finish the one before?
No.
No, we didn't, but we were talking about it, so.
Okay, sorry.
For the record, Mr. Chair, I'm not for number three.
You are not for what?
No, number three, objective number three.
You're, you're good with it?
I'm not, I don't, I don't agree with objective number three.
Oh.
And it's, even in what it's trying to do.
Okay. Well, then let's talk about that.
Well, you know, I think we heard from some people, a couple of people at least, to say if you want to, if you want to show appreciation, then you show appreciation by the conditions and the equipment and the salary you give people. And, and to just put it bluntly, I'm not for a everybody gets a certificate award. So, I mean.
That's definitely not my intention.
I know it's not your intention, and I'm broadly brushing that partially to be probably, you know, inappropriately humorous in the thing, but I'm not, I, I think a goal for us shouldn't be to establish, if the town manager or department heads want to establish award programs, that should, it just doesn't rise to the level to me of a select board goal.
I know, Tom, you quote movies and I'm terrible at quoting movies, I'm not, you're going to know the movie, I don't know the movie, but so, I remember the scene where someone's complaining about not feeling valued, like, well, that's what the money's for. I think sometimes, I think many people, myself included, like, I agree, I don't need some star certificate saying great job. What I care about is raises, more money in my pocket, you know, things like that, but I, but I do think that, you know, I also recognize, you know, my, my job, once a year we do like an all-staff day where we all get together and it's informal, like stuff that real, people like that.
Well, I think those kind of luncheons and a dinner.
Yeah.
Or a luncheon and around Christmas that people can get together, that establishes a camaraderie, I mean, those, those are real things that I do certainly support because that builds teamwork.
I have like such strong opinions on this, I have a hard time not getting.
Say it.
Kind of frustrated because coming from the internal staff, like, people are really unhappy and just being like, oh, let's have a luncheon where everyone's supposed to bring a potluck or, you know, nothing is actually provided by the town has been seen as like a big.
I'm talking about something provided by the.
Yeah, these should be catered.
But I'm also not, I want to say, I want to, I understand what you say, what you're saying with that, and I want to say right out upfront, the most important thing to me, because I say this in my own job and I've said this when people work for me or when I had my own company, is like what people, employees hate the most is that they're ignored. That means they talk to you and they say the things, what, things that aren't right or things that are problematic and they never get addressed, and that's where I think we should concentrate on, we should listen and make sure that the tools they have, the time commitment that they need, I mean, if somebody comes to us over nine months and says our accounting software is ruining my life because I'm spending all these times, that, and we seem powerless to do it, now that's a special situation, but that's when people, the morale goes down.
I think it's, I see what you're saying, but I still feel strongly about this one, even if it's like, some people really do need those pats on the back, like, I know it might seem silly, but like if someone is doing the work, you know, there, there's different ways that we can look at this, like, I've seen towns that do like fellow employees can submit a name of someone that did something great for them, you know, like, and it's a recognition program and it's like, it's a lottery drawing once a month and like somebody gets a, oh, hey, you won this award and it's a $25 gift certificate, like, there's actually some funding that goes along with it, and it's submitted by their peers, so like someone that goes above and beyond what they're, what they're supposed to do. I think at least looking at it, whether we, we implement it or not, I think is important, in my opinion, because what you're saying, I agree with theoretically, but that hasn't been done. So ensuring that it's been done is something that I think is, is important. I don't see what could hurt about having a recognition program.
I didn't say it's hurt, I just, I just say it doesn't rise to the level of a goal, that's all, that's, I mean, again, I think we're, you know, we're not, I'm not saying that's a horrible goal, I'm not saying it's not, it's really placating people, I'm just saying that, we have six goals, which, which again, which again, I will say upfront, I am not for six goals.
Yes.
Because, I mean, I want, I want, one of your goals in the first one we talked about tonight was make things achievable.
Correct.
So if you put so many that you become paralyzed, if we get to the end of this and we say in May, you know what, these were great goals, we didn't accomplish any of them, but they were great goals, that's what I'm worried about, that's all.
And that's a position we've been in several times. I mean, maybe, I largely agree with Tom on this, even though previously I've advocated for a town-wide employee recognition policy, but I think that if we think of this in a way of like, you know, staff know what they, what they want to get out of their jobs, right? I mean, sometimes at my own job, we've created this like staff-focused group that, that does all the cultural activities and events, so that way the staff are the ones who, who decide like what, what happens, that sometimes empowering the staff to direct and lead what they want to see is helpful, and I, and I think that the in-person events catered by the town, you know, the Christmas parties, you know, at off-site that are at another location where it's not people cooking all night long and, you know, have a couple of drinks after or something, like those kind of things to me go a long, long way. And maybe it's, maybe how we bridge that is that we focus on the events and then say that, you know, we want to encourage or empower departmental recognitions of staff performance, and I will say that we've been hearing a lot of it over the last year, I mean, we have been getting a lot of reports back to us about, hey, this person did a great job, you know, letter of commendation to Officer Brock, you know, different, different members of our staff, so I mean, I think some of that is already occurring.
It's going to be something I was going to bring up, that in some departments, they're better at bringing that forward, so, and I think that number two, objective two is the one to improve, to really improve the morale and.
The meat bones of it.
Right.
For sure.
That's why, and I've been, you know, I know with Michael Ray, he's been putting that on, you know, the town manager evaluations, and I have said that too, I mean, how can you improve things if you never ask people what needs to be improved? It's just, it's just a guess, and you don't have to guess because the people who want to have things changed work in the same place you do.
Right. All right, Renee, what do you, what do you think about this one?
Yeah, I'm okay taking it out because I think it, it should fall to department heads and, and I think having like a summer and a holiday off-site.
Yeah.
I mean, most companies do that, but we don't. No, no.
We need to.
Well, we should, let's make that an objective.
I mean, what you said earlier about how like people are expected to bring their own food, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, that's even worse.
There's never been.
That's worse than the pizza party.
We have pallets in my office too, so.
No, it is, it is.
Do I have to explain?
But I mean, to have like a food truck show up, you know, at like a summer.
All right, so we're going to remove it, but it doesn't mean that this isn't worthwhile and something that we will, you know, push for and try to get, you know, department heads to sort of start doing more.
It needs to be town-wide, it truly does.
Yes.
But it's not. That's why, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, before we delete it, I mean, we have a member who was a member of staff with very strong feelings about this.
Right.
We, I mean, I don't.
What if we take it and just maybe add something to objective two, so it's not just about the survey, that's about, I don't know.
I mean, I think the one thing that we can do to change this that I think like is maybe a little helpful and will ease some concerns here is just changing the word policy to program, because then the town manager can run with it, if there are things that we can do as the board to support it, we can pursue that. I don't know.
I am very interested though in adding in the holiday and the summer activities.
Yeah, for sure.
But we'd also would have to have a budget for that, you know, we can't just say.
Yeah.
We would, but I mean, that's.
But again, we don't need that as a goal, we can just say that we're going to do that and put it in, right.
Right.
Put it in the budget.
Yeah, and we're not, I mean, luckily, food and stuff, I mean, we're not talking thousands upon thousands of dollars, you know.
All right, so I do want to keep this for the reasons that Michael Ray said, I know we did have a majority of the board kind of say, let's remove it, but, and to the point where, you know, getting to May and then saying, oh, we created all these goals and they were great goals, but we didn't achieve all of them, actually, I'm not, I'm not going to finish that, nevermind. All right, let's move on to objective four. Develop a professional, I already read this one, but I don't know if we reviewed it.
If I may say so, before we hit to objective four, could we continue on the lines of objective three and add in the new objective four, which is, you know, the kind of all-staff outings, you know, the twice-a-year all-staff outings, that we want to have a policy that says that we got to do this, we need to have all-staff outings.
Yeah, we can add that if we want that as a separate one.
I think we're going in the wrong direction, okay.
We're going in the wrong direction by adding more.
Now we're adding things.
What if we, what if we took?
And I just want to point out that we also.
Are we going to have a policy that we need to establish a secret Santa?
I know, well, that's sort of what I'm about to get at. We changed this one to say especially establish policies, do we really need policies for these or do we just do them?
Well, I.
What if we, can we?
Yeah. Is that we haven't done them. And like, these are best practices that almost every organization does, but we haven't done it. So to me, you mandate.
Hold on, go ahead, Amanda.
What if we take, what are three and four and merge them somehow so that it's in, the goal of improving the climate by. You know, reviewing or implementing recognition and professional development and community air outings. I don't know what I'm trying to say. But kind of making it one that's a little bit more broad for, so that it's looking at improving the, the climate as a whole.
Yeah, we can combine them.
Or is that?
It's.
Am I overcomplicating it?
It's a culture thing that you've got to work with your employees on. We have a training coming up. And somebody said, why don't we put everybody together and they can all have their lunch? And I said, no. You can have everybody have the training and I'll pay to bring pizzas in. That is a recognition by management. You know, what, what's $75 worth of pizzas?
Right.
Um, this program, um, there's a $250 reward in three categories. Fellow employees, the public nominate people. Um, and when I started it, I would buy everybody lunch. The person who replaced me, I guess, is a little more frugal. He now presents the awards at the annual town meeting. I mean, there's some feel to it, but you don't have that, you know, camaraderie of eight people around the table and such. Some of these things, um, in my view. In some manner need to be written and codified, or they become. Fleeting moments of the manager that comes in. Because you need to train the manager in the culture of your organization as well. Not everyone's going to know what you want and why that's important to you. So. I do think that setting some of these things to writing starts to formalize that and, and create that roadmap.
All right. I honestly, I'm okay with having them as separate goals. Uh, I don't think we, you know. I'm, I'm not concerned that there's too much here that we can't really do here. So how do we want to add, going back to Michael Ray, what you were saying? What do you want to add to objective three?
Well, I was saying a whole new objective.
A whole, okay, sure. But what's the substance of it? The outings?
The substance is having those, uh, what, what do you call them? Kind of those all staff, uh, events.
Offsite.
Offsite, all staff.
Yeah.
Events. All staff, you know, employee appreciation events, uh, twice a year.
All right. What do we think? Do we want to add it as a separate one?
I mean, it's, whether it's a separate one or the same one, it's all.
Yeah.
Still something distinctively different. So.
It is distinctively different. All right. So let's just, let's draft it here. So objective four.
We're making these longer instead of.
Well, I think we're going to get shorter. Once you get to the next ones, because I'm kind of a, let's delete, delete.
What's the next one?
No, next goals, next goals. But we'll get there.
All right. Objective four. All right. All right. What do you want me to write?
What if we, what if we took those three that we just talked about and said something like improve town culture by implementing a recognition policy? A professional development, development policy and conducting the events that we just said. What if we just make it one broad? And so the overall objective is improving.
Sure.
I'm worried about the professional development policy. Yeah, we didn't even put that in a policy. I mean, like I know police and fire have training and, and things and. I mean, it just seems like it's, it can vary from department to department.
Well, we have, I think we have a professional development policy.
It would have to be really vague.
We have it in the charter that says that every, um, every employee is supposed to receive an annual performance review. So in order to get a review, you have to have some kind of performance goals, right? And objectives. And, and so, you know, it just.
Talking about professional development, professional development policy. I thought we had, most departments have that. They have certain, whether it's.
Continuing education certification or whatever.
No.
Police department does.
I know that because that's the remnant of the Quinn bill, but.
Um, that is by my understanding, like for the clerical union, that was something that we had to negotiate and it was not supported.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
There is something.
How much of this falls under the, the CBAs?
Under the what?
And any, um, contract, any bargaining.
Oh, oh, they're bargaining.
All right. So I think it might be too long separately. So I just broke it up again and then we'll just add it here. So objective five is. Organizing annual offsite employee events.
Does it have to be offsite? Like, could we do it in a center of town type thing or?
I think offsite is just like not at.
Yeah.
Adult activity center or, which is wonderful, but you know. All right. Let's, um, I'm going to pick up the speed a little bit because I want to cover all of this and it's already eight thirty-six. All right. So then objective six.
Wait, we skipped four. Are we leaving?
Nope. These are all, no, we did that. Oh, do you have something else to say about this one?
Well, I don't know. I'm, I'm just wondering how much of that is covered under CBAs? Or like, how, like, what is our current policy?
We don't have one.
And what would a policy, can, can we actually do this?
Some of your employees have minimum standards they have to do on a continuous basis. Police, fire, your building inspector.
Right. Certifications and, yeah.
That's about where it ends, truthfully.
I would shorten objective four to, um, something along the lines of ensuring professional development, uh, and conducting annual performance reviews.
But I think there's a lot more here.
There is.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the way it's written.
Okay. I think the, my only concern is, is, you know, the objective here is creating policies and so developing, well, developing a professional development policy to support. Continuous learning and career growth through training programs, workshops and educational opportunities.
Just say developing profession.
I would say, uh, my one recommendation is remove backed by policies that encourage.
Yeah.
Facilitate. Just so, it should just say, uh, growth through training programs, workshops and educational opportunities.
Yes.
To facilitate staff development.
Okay.
Professional development.
Look, you don't have to have two facilitates.
Oh, oops. Thank you.
And you don't need a comma either.
I wanted to address those two, developing professional development. I wanted to change this verb here.
What do we start?
How about?
Ensuring.
It's not assisting, but encouraging. That's, yeah, I was going for that. Encouraging. Okay, cool. All right. Now we're going to jump down to six. Facilitate communication between the select board employees by establishing regular structured interactions between the board and town employees to foster open communication and ensure alignment on town goals and initiatives. This one might be a little too far.
Yeah, delete.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a thing out of our scope.
All right, cool.
You act, okay.
All right. Moving on. Conduct long-term budget analysis that balances the need to deliver quality services to residents and the various financial challenges the town and residents experience.
So my comment broadly is, uh, I think that goal number three or the second goal we approved tonight is largely a staff goal that's going to take some time. This, the first goal we, um, the revamping of the goal setting process is going to take some time. And I think this goal is going to, the goal number, the first goal on the sheet is going to take a significant amount of time. I see overlap between goal number two and the task force that Selectman M Key is leading. Uh, I, I don't know if this is distinctly different.
Tony Colubrini is leading it, by the way.
Yeah.
Oh.
Tony's the chair.
I thought you were. Uh, I, I see overlap between the two. I don't, I don't know if this is, if we need this goal.
I would say insofar as, again, if I use my analogy of what Carter gave us, if our goals are to set things onto this. Those items are already on the list because they're already in, as, as will be the next goal, by the way. The same thing.
So I guess my question to the board is, especially given the last budget year that we've had. What do you guys think we should be doing proactively about the budget?
We, we have, we have, I don't want to answer, talk too much. I recognize I'm probably talking more than most tonight. Um, we have the handbooks that we're working on, you know, the board and committee handbook. We have the financial policy handbook. That's going to do a lot of this stuff. I think that's going to achieve a lot of this stuff.
I am going to, again, at the risk of, again, I, I don't mind causing waves because that's kind of seems like what I do, but.
You were a surfer when you were young.
Yeah, no, yeah. I, I grew up on Long Island. I'm near the water, but I never surfed. I would say that the, the. The override last year was not an issue that the town side that we had control over faced. It was brought to us by the school committee who operates their own budget. And basically all the town manager does is say, okay, this is what we're allocating as far as funding, but they developed their own budget and it came in very late for the town override. So I think that the town side, and I don't say that to make a division. I just, I use that to make distinction. That the town manager who's responsible for generating the townside budget didn't have an issue. So. To, to your point, Mr. Chair, what could we be doing? Like gathering all the departments and saying, are you seeing any shortfall? Like now, are you going to see or project any shortfall? Um, that was my, even though I supported the override for the reasons I stated on other public meetings. I was not happy with the fact that it came in very late to us and, and how the town was scrambling to, to understand what we could or couldn't do and what we should or shouldn't do. So if we have to do anything, it'd be like, okay, go to every department, including schools and say, is anybody seeing or anticipating the request for an override?
Yeah, but I mean, a lot of, I agree with, with you, Tom. And, and I think a lot of what you're proposing in goal number two falls into kind of a town manager operating procedure. I mean, I think that we as a board, before we get into the budget, you know, we need to be asking these questions. Um, and I, and it just didn't, I've been on the board for five years. I, I never assumed that someone's going to have a huge shortfall and not, and that we don't fully know about until March.
Right.
Um, they, well, I, maybe a little sooner than that. I know someone's watching.
Like January.
And they're saying, we said in December, you know, but I mean, usually the budget's coming out and we're hearing about it. You, and, and I think that. If we're moving to this more collaborative budgeting process in which the town manager is looking to us for guidance, that that's a critical thing. And then.
That could be a goal right there.
And then looking back at it, I mean, not to get suicide, but looking back the last couple of years, I mean, if we had implemented some of these other goals that they were already in place. It would have prevented some of the crises that I think we went through in the last couple of years. So I, I don't know.
Removing it and I do like that Carter is willing to change the culture a little bit of how we do this and it's a little more collaborative. But, you know, also I have to say, I read a lot of goals, documents from other select boards. And we're not the only community in Massachusetts that faced an override.
Correct.
And it's, I think we find some of their practices and how they set goals, keeping in mind that every town has their own culture with their own personalities. And processes and histories. I think they would find it equally as shocking that we're not going to have a goal about our budget this year. As we maybe look to theirs and think it's weird that they include things like this, but.
Maybe it's a goal about the budget process. Collaborating more with FinCom, with the town manager, being more transparent early on. Cause I think that's what happened last year.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's what fell through the cracks.
But I know other communities, like they really are, like there's one town that also submitted a budget task force. And that's why I have some of this language here, because they wrote goals while also creating a budget task force and how they sort of have that interaction. But one of them, it was like explore options for the town to raise revenues. And they had a whole bunch of options that they were looking at, you know, it's, it's just, it's a little strange that we're just saying, eh, now whatever, it'll, this year it'll work out, you know?
Think that's what we're saying.
I know.
Well, I, I think what I said was that we're already doing a review of all of our financial policies. It's already into a handbook.
Right.
And I think we can build in some of this stuff into that. Um, and, and we're doing that absent a goal and we're going to keep doing it. And, and I don't, I think that this overlaps with that effort.
That's fine.
I don't think so too.
So we took Munis off the goal one.
We did.
Right? Saying that we would put it in the budget goal. Now if we don't have any budget goal.
Well, we did add a goal to the one I, the goal I had. We did add an objective to the goal I had. The technology one, if we want to be more explicit, we can put it in there.
Yeah. Yeah. It's fine. We can just skip over it now and then, once we get back down there, we can talk about it. Carter, are you going to say something?
Well, I have a question. Do you? In the worlds I come from, I would sit with the select board and talk about, okay, here's your goals. This is what we want to accomplish. What can we talk overall about the economy? You know, can we do any expansion this year? Are you want us to be? Level services, level funded, which are different things. Do you want to cut back? I mean, in one town, uh, the select board said. Got to start taxing below our capacity. First time I'd ever been told that. Did the board and the manager have that kind of a sense of direction?
No.
Conversation?
No. I mean, it's shocking for me to even hear these questions being asked.
To, to tax below capacity? No, that's never been discussed.
No, the collaboration.
Process.
Budget development.
So, so I would, you know, we would go through the goal setting, we'd do that, then the town manager would prepare what was called a budget guidance.
Right.
Which would include a sense of direction from the select board as to. What their appetite was for the coming budget, you know, was it to be level services? Was it to be level funded? Um, an expansion budget, a reduction budget?
We had, in the past, we, we don't do that systematically every year. We've done it in, you know, over the course here and there. And depending on, on the situation, depending on the economic situation, depending upon the workload in town. We had had people say, come to us and say, okay, like these are the things we need to do. We need to add resources here, here and there. I need to know what the priority is of those. So those discussions in the past, some, some in the distant past, some in the recent past.
Okay.
But it's not a, it should be something that happens every year. And we have, whether this is an issue or not, we have generally looked to the, the town manager through the departments and all of that funneling up. To say, hey, listen, these are the places that people are asking us to put more resources. It never comes down to, we want to shrink resources. So it's always growing them. And I, what are the priorities? Like if, if we have to, if we have only the resources to do this amount of money and we have these six items, which one would you prioritize? That would be what I would expect the process to be.
I like the idea of incorporating that, that process into our goal setting process and our timeline. I like the idea of them going hand in hand, at least giving our guidance toward what the development, like you just said.
I think that, I mean, we have a budget process and whether it's formalized, it should be part of that. And I haven't reviewed that in some time, so I don't know.
Well, I'll just say last year, I know we had our standing budget item on the agenda and week after week, we would say, all right. Anything we have to say about the budget? No? Okay, moving on. So I think there's a lot that we could do to, you know. Be a little more productive during the budget cycle.
I think we've historically treated it like it was the town manager's budget and that part of the role of the town manager was to evaluate all those variety of needs and put together. A budget that, a draft budget that starts to address them. Um, and I think we have largely, um, been successful with that model. You know, but I do like the idea of the select board having guidance, but you know, I want to be mindful that, you know, we are elected. And part of the goal of having a town manager is to have that continuity. And you know, if you're, if you put yourself in the role of the town manager who's trying to, you know, see the town, move the town from day to day, year to year. That sometimes being able to implement their own vision in this process is helpful and it kind of removes it from the whims, so to speak, of, um. Of individual desires of how we get the select workers and I'll control the budget. And we've really treated it like, well, the town manager creates a budget. Um, and we endorse it, we support it, we offer our comments, but you know, it, it's, it's not our so-called budget.
Of course not, yeah.
I think the last two years have been extraordinary circumstances that really have. Defied and stretched the limits of lots of things. Well, you know, all the vacancies in personnel, maybe even some vacancies. Uh, in appointed and elected positions. And then the tax issue the year before, the override last year, I mean. These have been like one wave after wave. It's like getting knocked down at the beach and every time you get up, there's another wave behind you and you get knocked down again. So we haven't really had a regular budget season in three years. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. All right, cool.
But I think the successful completion of the goals we've already identified definitely will remedy the conditions.
Yeah.
That contributed to some of the chaos.
I, I, I think so too.
If we translate these into this, this is what I, this is the piece I think is missing.
The implementation documents.
Right. Well, I mean, there should be an easy review, like, okay, what is the DPW working on? And you take out this sheet and you say, oh, this is what the DPW is working on. And it's what I have to ask about when they're in front of us. But, you know, and there's never a unified document, and, and I think we really need to address that. That's been a handicap.
Yeah, good point. All right, so let's move on. Continue to address the needs of our aging municipal buildings by finalizing a long-term municipal building plan.
I don't know if we need a goal.
I actually changed this by, I changed this, this isn't the most current version, I changed by finalizing to us achieving consensus on the long-term municipal building plans.
My comment is that this board created the Municipal Building Design Committee, they are advisory to this board.
I know, that's why I think it needs to be a goal.
And this board previously endorsed the hybrid plan that we presented. And then, you know, because of the chaos, you know, we kind of hit a pause of, you know, we can't really.
Sure.
But I, I don't know if we need to identify this as a separate goal, because we've already created a committee to assist us with this. And, you know, I know we don't have public comments committee reports tonight, but there is a request to come before this board with an update, you know, next month.
Yeah, I know.
But I don't know if we need a separate goal.
I will also point out again, that I created my goals collaboratively, and this is what people said, like, yeah, you guys really need to like prioritize that and make it a goal. So.
Okay.
But at the same time, like, I hear you, not everything we do needs to be a goal.
That's how we created the committee. We actually extended the previous building reuse committee.
Yes.
To enlarge it to be a municipal building design committee. So we have done that. Now, the fact that it hasn't come to fruition has happened from several factors that are many of them beyond our control. So.
And there are ones within our control.
I mean, so the point is, is, let me just explain this. If, if it's somebody, if somebody says they feel better, if we had it on the list just to identify that it's not complete, it's kind of like putting the old business on the agenda. We can certainly do that, but we've already done it, like, there's nothing to do except re-recognize that that was never completed.
Right.
If it makes people feel better to do that, fine, but I mean, I don't know that it helps anything going forward.
I'm fine with that, especially the approach that we take, and I'm glad this year that we're sort of expanding it a little bit to be more collaborative, but the, the approach that we take with goals is very narrow, it's very specific, and historically it's been siloed. So, again, like, I don't know how many times I'm gonna say this, I've looked at other communities' select board goals, and some of those documents are like 10, 20 pages, you know, they have like mission statements, and it's like a complete list, it's more so like a, it's a document of values and priorities, more so than all of these things need to get done by May.
Well, the, the question I would have, I mean, again, so firstly, stylistically, people do different things, different ways, and that's fine. The real question is, when it comes down to reviewing their goals, how many things happen off those goals? So if I have 10 goals, or I have 10 pages of goals, and every year I take one page off and I add another page, is it any different than if you had three or four goals, that you kind of accomplished, maybe one holds over? I mean, the town manager's 925 Mass Ave has held over for like five years, six years, or whatever?
More.
You know, is there much difference? So saying they have a big document is fine, but if we don't know how they use it and how many things come off of it, it's really, that's where the real accomplishment happens.
Yeah.
And hopefully with our goal of revamping the process, we can do some more of that research and look at how other communities do it. So maybe we, we can say, okay, that we, this is how we want to change this goal process moving forward.
And I would say, as an aside, or an addendum to all of this, making the goal is, making the schedule, making the policies, making the process is one thing. Adhering to it, it's kind of like the Seinfeld thing about, you know, the car reservation, you know, the reservation, as opposed, holding the reservation is the whole essence of the reservation, not making it. So again, making the process, we have to follow it, and that's really what we need to do.
All right. Enjoy having this philosophical conversation.
Anything that involves Seinfeld is really worth researching.
All right, so then we're back to this, we already, we already did that. All right, so this is goal number three now. Increase transparency and availability of information to the public. Objective one, launch a comprehensive public information dashboard, create a centralized online platform that provides easy access to up-to-date town data, financial reports, and project updates, allowing residents to track progress and understand town operations. I will say that we have all this already, it's just not, not up to date on a lot of it.
Right.
We have one, like, town finances dashboard, that looks like it's from, I think, like, I forgot the year, but several years old, that utilizes some third-party service to like visualize our budget, but it's from several years ago. So it seems like we've tried this. Yeah.
The thing about, I mean, several of us are in IT, and to, you know, to do websites and keep them current is a full-time job for generally more than one person. And when, and that's when that person gets given all the documents that need to be on the website.
I mean, that's, that's a challenge with the department heads, we've tried to explain, you know, you're paving a road, send us some pictures.
Right.
You know, you've got to, you've got to tell us about these things, because if that site isn't constantly being refreshed with new material.
Right, if it gets stale, then people don't go to it anymore.
Right.
Right. And the other thing is organizing the content so that it makes manageable sense to a user going to it, is a lot different than creating the content. Again, the people who run the websites can't create the content too, that makes, they don't have the expertise, they don't have the information. So it really is a total shift. Cause we have the tools to do it, we have a, a, you know, a professional website.
I think Kara has done a really good job of, as migrating and implementing, and even when I was still on staff, you know, she did work really hard to get the information from the different departments to update. So.
Most of our website is very up to date. Like earlier, I don't forget who it was that said it, like, board and committee members and all that stuff, that's updated like very immediately.
I think thinking about like.
There was a time, there was a gap where it was not up to date. And some of that was the, the committee's not communicating, these changes happen, so and so and that.
Oh, sure, yeah. Well, that's.
So if you're talking about the ultimate in collaboration, the website is the ultimate in collaboration.
So I, I think what my thought process when I brought that, I think this one was one of mine, brought it forward, was updating the information. So I don't know how, if we wanted to reword it or whatnot, but you know, there's a lot of projects that are going on in town that you can't find information on on the website. There, there aren't updates, that there aren't, so I don't know whether it's a launching a comprehensive dashboard, but.
Yeah.
My thought process was, I just want to get more information out there.
I had that experience recently too, because there's a very specific project going on in town right now, that I wanted to view certain documents for, and I went under the, you know, the relevant board's webpage on our town website, and there was one document there that wasn't really helpful. And I was saying to myself, you know, this is a huge project, there should be like a lot more documents here. You know, you have the page specifically for this project, you know, and maybe it should be a little more useful. And the one document that was on there wasn't really helpful at all. But at the same time, how do we put this into a goal? Cause that's on the board and the committee, right, and those members to email Kara and say, hey, can you please upload this to the website? You know, it's a little more than, I think we have the process in place already with staff. I think it's just having people submit that information.
Unfortunately, the, the problem with some of this, this goal, which by the way, I, I was, this was the second goal of Amanda's, and I really agree with it. But the problem is, of course, one of enforcement, because like, the, the ensure, ensure the timely posting of public meeting agendas in minutes. Well, just getting some boards to generate minutes, including our own, has been problematic. And so, you know, you could say that's the policy, and I think we actually have a policy.
Yeah, we do.
Enforcing the policy is difficult.
Yep.
And I know we've had, you know, just to speak to that one, like, even on the municipal where we had staff assigned to take minutes, and then write minutes for over a year.
Right.
And then now, we have to go back as members and watch all the meetings and regenerate them.
Well, at least your meetings are recorded, so you can do that.
Yeah, whereas other committees don't have them recorded, it's like, how do you generate? And we're running, you know, we're aware of that now, where some, you know. So it is, it is a challenge here.
Oh, so that brings me up, that brings up a point on this one. Yes, exactly. We should add an objective to this one, to make a policy to, around that all public meetings have to be recorded in some way.
I am 100% for that.
Yeah, even if they're not broadcasted, they're at least.
Whether it's, whether it's a Zoom recording, and in the very lowest case, at the very least, at least an audio recording of the meeting.
100%.
But everything should be visually too, because that's how people can stay involved.
Yeah, I mean.
And they can stay involved asynchronously. I don't have to be at the meeting.
Yeah, all right, let's add that as subjective.
I know someone from the public's gonna say, they don't like it when the select board creates policies that affect everyone. But I, I just want to comment that that, in certain situations, that is our role.
Right.
Can we?
Go ahead.
I think it reflects the time too. It brings it up to, you know, why shouldn't things be recorded at this day and age?
Well, they, I, I view, if I might, that's, that's the business practice. You know, I mean, I've heard this in previous lives of, well, you know, we turn the cash over when we can, or when it builds up too much. Well, no, the business practice is, once a week, you turn the cash over, or when it hits this level.
Right.
You need a uniform practice across the organization. And I do think that that is the role, you know, to decide what the zoning ordinance should be, or how they're gonna conduct, no, no, that's, that's not yours. But the general business practices I would suggest do belong to this board.
And while we can argue, and, and I think rightfully so, that maybe the select board doesn't have the authority, we can certainly bring an article to town meeting, that town meeting passes something that all public meetings have to be recorded.
In a bylaw, yeah.
That way, it's not us, it's the town, because really, that's who benefits from it, the entire.
Yeah, true. I mean, we've seen many cases of this, so. Many have at this point. All right, so I added that here. I don't know if we want to wordsmith it. Create a policy to ensure all public meetings, or, or, as to your point, maybe we don't want to say create a policy.
Ensure?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do. Ensure, oops, wrong button. Ensure all public meetings are recorded for future reference, regardless of whether or not those meetings are broadcasted. All right, so, objective two, launch a comprehensive public information dashboard.
I think it's just broadcast.
Broad?
Yes, I think you're right.
Oh, look at that. Learned something new today. All right. Back to objective two. I know we were, we were discussing this one a lot. Launch a comprehensive public information dashboard. So we can at least remove that part, because we do have the structure, right, on the town website for all of it. The real issue is updating it.
So we also have, I mean, I didn't, when I was combing through the town website a year or so ago, I realized that we were part of, it's not UGov, but something else, and it's like a separate website that.
ClearGov.
That's what I was just talking about.
ClearGov?
ClearGov.
I was just talking about that.
Okay, so like, and that's really cool, and it seems as if it's updated every quarter, or at least it was when I last looked, it was updated quarterly.
We had a problem with ClearGov because we didn't have, so ClearGov is how we do our capital planning and our budget process, it goes through ClearGov. Last fiscal year, because we didn't have the town accountant at the time, Heather had updated that information, and it was, there were some technological issues, because we were missing that, there was a gap there, a staffing gap. So whether that is accurate now, or whether that's been fixed, I'm not sure. But that is a transparency platform that a lot of municipalities use, that residents can go in, and it's, obviously it's different from what residents see versus what staff sees. But there was some big challenges with that software last year, so I don't know if that's why it's not up to date on the website.
Okay.
When I looked, it hadn't been updated for several years. So it seemed like it was just initiative that someone tried out and then didn't actually keep it going the next year. Cause I only saw one budget actually uploaded as like a public dashboard.
I remember seeing like historical.
They may be talking about two different things then.
Okay. All right.
All right, so, create a centralized online platform, I think we have that. So how do we want to say, like, maintain up-to-date? Do we want to just say, like, maintain up-to-date town data, financial reports, and project updates, allowing residents to track progress and understand town operations?
At the end of update, at the end of update, say on the town website.
I didn't hear that, my girl was talking, what'd you say?
I said, after the word project updates, before the comma, say on the town website. So maintain up-to-date town data, financial reports, and project updates on the town website, comma, allowing residents to track progress and understand town.
Okay, good. I think that better captures what we, what we really want. All right, objective three, ensure timely postings of public meeting agendas and minutes, adopt policies to post meeting agendas and minutes well in advance, enhancing transparency and giving residents ample time to prepare and participate in public meetings. So this is sort of like what we wanted to do with like releasing, like those packets.
Yeah, which is the next one.
Oh, is it?
So.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
This one was specifically about agendas and minutes.
Yeah.
And we do have a policy specific to the select board, so maybe we need to say, review the policy instead of adopting policies. But I think this should be something that's townwide, not just the select board. I think that there needs to be a uniform, I think there should be a template for minutes and agendas that is townwide, and I think that there should be a uniform policy of when they have to be posted and when they have to be completed by. That's where my thought process was on this.
Yeah, I get that.
So there is policy for when agendas have to be posted.
Yeah.
And, and I, there is a policy.
That's a law.
For when minutes, but that's fallen by.
For agendas, that's the open meeting law, it has to be posted 72 hours before the meeting.
Right, right.
So review policies regarding posting.
Forty-eight, right.
Public business.
Yeah.
Meeting agendas and minutes. And then I would just, I, I don't think you need the rest, really. Or you could say, you could say, you could leave it at giving, leave giving, oh, okay.
Control Z.
So leave, remove from adopt policies to the and before given, so, just to reassure, I mean, it, it gives an explanation about why you're doing it. So include, yeah, right there.
What are we gonna review about?
Give residents ample time to prepare for, I'm just gonna review the, the policies.
But the, with respect to the agendas, I mean, we're, that's open meeting law.
Yes.
I think I wanted it to be.
We've already done, there you go.
I was considering in that policy, including templates that can be used.
So that's different, like, I think, I think an, kind of an SOP or best practices for agendas and minutes?
There you go, okay, there you go.
That can go into your committee handbook.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. I think that's why I wanted to review it, because maybe it's just bits and pieces of it live in different places. So the review could be, okay, we already have this, but it, you know, it's spread out over several different documents.
How about this then, to include what Brené said, review policies regarding standards of public meeting agenda and minute formats.
Yeah, give rid of the posting.
Then give it to the giving. It would be nice if the minutes were all across the board in the same format, that would be.
I attended one of the mandatory trainings I took in another town, and I brought back to Heather that it was like multiple trainings happen at the same time, and one of them was training volunteers on how to write minutes. And, you know.
I think there's a free one you can do in MMA.
And if we kind of look at the employee handbook and incorporate, not employee, the board and committee handbook, and employ that, and, you know, find a way to add that into it.
There is a start of that in there. It's very minimal though.
All right, objective four, make select board packets available online to provide easy online access to all preparatory materials for select board meetings, to ensure that residents can fully participate in discussions and decision-making processes.
I think the whole thing is to ensure transparency, so maybe everything from to ensure can be deleted.
Yeah.
Um, do we want to say packets? Is that clear enough, or should we say meeting materials?
Right.
Yeah, meeting materials.
I would say meeting materials, not packets, right?
That's kind of our verbiage.
Are available.
All right.
Are available.
Materials are available.
Will make.
Make, oh, no, yeah.
To provide easy online access to all.
So we have.
To provide easy access, you can get rid of the second online.
To just get rid of all of this?
No, there's just a second mention of online.
Make select board meeting materials available.
They'll be available online to provide easy access.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And I don't think we have to say.
For select rooms.
No, make.
Well, we have materials twice.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at.
Make select board.
To provide easy access to the public, I mean.
Materials.
Yeah, I think exactly.
Materials available online to provide access.
To the public.
To increase residents' awareness of agen, I don't know.
I liked it how we had it before, so to provide, what did we just say?
To provide access to all preparatory materials for select board meetings.
Yeah, to provide.
Easy access to the public.
Advance access.
To provide.
There you go.
Yeah.
Advance access to all preparatory meetings to the public.
No, we're posting the material, so just to the public.
To the public.
We don't have to send the material all over again.
Oh, okay.
Make select board meeting materials available online to provide.
Advance access to the public.
Advanced, or is it advance?
Advance.
Advance, okay. Objective five, enhance town communication channels, expand the use of social media, local media, and the town website to disseminate important information, updates, and alerts, ensuring that all residents have access to timely and relevant information. I think this is kind of already captured in objective two. And I think everything else, you know, I think we actually do have like a pretty good social media presence.
I think we do, too.
Really do.
Yeah, I think Kara's done a really good job of that.
I don't think we need objective five.
I think the bigger problem is people who don't go online.
Right, well, that's a problem, yeah.
For anything, for the town website, just people who are, you know, don't like to touch computers.
Create a public office hours program for select board members. Schedule regular, regular times when select board members are available to meet with residents, discuss issues, and gather feedback, enhancing direct communication and responsiveness.
If only we had regular meetings that people could come to.
This one, I knew this was probably gonna get taken off. This is one that I had seen in actually.
Sorry, Carter.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple of different communities where it was like, one, it would rotate, like, one member per quarter would have like an hour that they would be meeting with the town manager and the assistant town manager, and people could come in. So essentially, it would be like, for the five of us, it'd be less than once a year that I would, that would be happening. And it would just be a more informal conversation, you know, like the town council has office hours. It's something similar to that, but.
It can't be, it can't be a quorum of us.
That's what I just said, it'd be one, I was suggesting like one member, like a rotating, one member rotates however often we suggest.
I think as elected officials, I think it's expected, especially since we have town email addresses, that people can contact us whenever they'd like.
And they do.
Right, and they should.
Yep.
So I, I don't know that we need office hours for people to come in to say, I mean, they should, they, I mean, I, I don't get lots. I mean, there, there have been prior, when I started with the select board, I had a year that, oh my God, you know, people call you all the time. They don't call you all the time. Every once in a while, I get, if I get three calls a year from somebody, usually it's an email nowadays. And, hey, you respond to them. I don't think.
Right, and I get emails saying like, hey, like, can we talk about this? And then I do, you know, so.
That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think we need to have office hours officially. I don't think people do most of the things, and, I mean, every, the world's going the other direction. You know, nobody wants to meet in.
Yeah, it's all in an email.
Right.
This could have been an email.
We're moving it.
It could have been an email, or can we, why do I have to come there? Can't we meet on Zoom?
It's gonna be a test.
All right.
And that's the only way I can talk with my daughter is a text.
Objective five.
I don't know how to use the.
Why are you calling?
No, you're supposed to text first. You can't just call people. Objective five, incorporate Lunenburg 101 informational sessions. Offer sessions designed to educate residents about municipal operations, services, and how they can get involved in local government, improving civic engagement and understanding.
I think this is a great one.
So this one I looked at, I believe it was NADIC, has this, and this is more of a staff directive, not an R directive. So whether this is an appropriate thing to put here, but these are things that they try to encourage and educate the public. So like, say, the police department would host, there, this Lunenburg 101 would be at, but the police department. People could come in and learn. I mean, the police department kind of already does these types of things. But each individual department, whether it's land use or whatever it is, I mean, it could be, again, once a quarter. I'm not talking weekly or anything like that, but that was where my brain was.
In the past, there was a town organization that used to run the, like, public elected official debates, whether it was a local debate or state legislative debate. And we did some, I was on that, and we did some things with PAC where we would explain, hey, this is what the finance committee does, this is what town meeting is like, and things like that. And it was very helpful, and I think we should probably work with PAC to get those recorded, because then, once you record them, you can play them.
Yep.
And when we have vacancies on things, people can ask, or we even have them on the website. It's like, hey, what is the finance committee? What is the whatever, right? What is the agricultural preservation district? What do they do? What does historical commission do?
The school committee has a series on their website.
Yeah, it would be great.
Carol Arshambo did.
Sorry to keep my backups.
Yeah, no, it's better that way.
I think videos.
Didn't realize I was doing the right thing in the beginning.
Videos are helpful because then people can access them at their convenience whenever they want to. If you missed that quarterly or, you know, biannual meeting, you could, you know, and you don't have, yeah. So I think if we were to incorporate this, we're trying to think of it in terms of like video and working with PAC.
It'd be great to work with PAC so we create, over time, a library where we cover every committee that there is. And, you know, it'll take a while, but, you know, you could probably do, you know, one every two months or something like that. I don't know what their schedule, I just pulled it.
Right, right. Yeah, I like it. It's a good idea. So let's see.
There's a three-part video series for the school.
Cool.
So do we want to say, create instead of incorporate, Lunenburg 101 informational videos?
Are we creating them or are we gonna work with PAC?
Collaborate with PAC.
Well, yeah, of course, I thought that part would be implied, but. All right, so I'll say collaborate with PAC to create, and then we'll say, designed to educate residents about municipal operations, services, and how they can involve local government, improving civic engagement and understanding. All right, cool. Yeah, I like it. All right, and then, look at that. We made it through the document.
And shortened it down to four goals, with goal number four likely being a multi-year, three goals attainable within the rest of the fiscal.
And if you wanted to, just so it doesn't stand out, you can certainly change my actions into objectives so that it's, it just fits in, so just change those.
Okay.
I'd love to know where you got that format with objectives, because I don't recall it.
I looked at our last year's goals, because I actually do remember seeing two different formats. And then I went to the most recent one.
It could have been my, me doing it.
Yeah, maybe.
Because we were historically.
Yeah, it's not a big deal. I just was wondering.
When I was in the folder and I saw all the different formats, that's why I just was simply like, I'm just gonna use bullets or whatever, because I didn't know how we were gonna format it.
One thing I just noticed, this doesn't really fit into the format, so.
Yeah, afterwards, I'm a little.
Policies and procedures to keep current the following, so a list of.
Right, a list of technological resources.
Resources critical.
Excellent.
And I think the only one is one, you're missing a, and one is one.
One.
Objective one, a, complete.
A, complete, thorough, yes. All right, cool. Well, it looks like.
Also, scroll back to the beginning just to.
The beginning of this?
Yeah, the, no, no, the, the beginning of the whole document.
Oh, hold on one second.
Where we, where we made everything into the.
I'll fix that up.
The faux-Jerin form.
Oh. Well, I think we only, we only.
I just want to make sure we did that, because I think there was one.
We only did it on this goal.
Okay, you're right. No, but all of them were, all of the objectives were, okay.
Yes, creating, implementing, creating, encouraging, organizing.
The Ingols, yes.
All right, how do we feel about this?
Excellent. This has been a very productive conversation.
Yeah.
And I think this kind of almost represents somewhat of a shift here for us.
What do you mean?
And how we're thinking about these matters and things. I wouldn't say shift, it's a continuation, it's an enhancement.
I will take the opportunity to point out that I think, like the goals, this meeting, if you have a goal for the meeting, you can actually go in depth and work on it and complete it, so it doesn't play out in like three meetings where you just get this much done and then everybody has to remember their mindset they were in, and it's like, so I encourage these kind of things.
As do I.
Here, here.
All right, well, anything else we want to cover while we're still in our goals workshop? I need to pull up the agenda just so. I'm almost certain the next thing is just adjourn, but.
Well, before we, well, it doesn't matter whether you adjourn or not. I do want to encourage, as a member of the town manager screening committee, I know I had my discussion with community paradigm last night, and they are waiting for two other members to schedule appointments with them, so please reach out to John Petrin.
I was gonna bring that up at the end of the meeting, but if you want to bring it up in public.
I haven't scheduled, did I miss an email?
Yes, you did, missed an email.
John Petrin.
Who was it?
John Petrin, P-E-T-R-I-N.
All right, so the next thing is upcoming meetings. We're gonna be meeting next Tuesday, October 1st, and the following Tuesday, October 8th. And with that, excuse me, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. It is 9:21 PM and the select board is adjourned. Thank you, first of all, thank all of you for the productive meeting. I think this was a great workshop. And thank all of you at home for watching. We'll see you next week. Have a good night.
Good night.